Call the meeting to order at 6:33 on November 23, 2021. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of November 9, 2020-21.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the regular meeting held November 9, 2021.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, audience of citizens, any business to come before the boards? A couple of citizens here, anything to talk about? No? Okay. Next item on the agenda is an appointment for the Housing Authority. It's a five-year term, Astasia M. Cowell. She has, she's actually finishing up, I think, a two-year, I think we appointed her two years ago to fill in for someone who had resigned and moved out of town, so Astasia wants to keep going.
I'll make a motion to, for the Housing Authority, five-year term for Astasia M. Cowell, term to expire 2/1/2027.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is solar panel project discussion with a possible executive session regarding contract negotiations. Last meeting, we had a presentation put in front of us by Titan, Titan Energy, who are representing us through the Council of Governments, no, sorry, yeah, no, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. Yeah. They put together a bid process, they put out a request for bids, they got four bids, we went over all of that. They, they are advising that two of those bids are what we should look at. Dwayne, you had a series of questions that I think you sent off to Adam. You shared those answers with me today, but I want to just make sure that you, those answers either satisfied, you didn't satisfy, you were led to more questions.
Um, I'm satisfied, but again, my, I don't want to keep beating a dead horse, my biggest concern is the, the financial part of it. That, you know, they're telling us we're gonna get forty-two thousand, I'm concerned about that over the longevity of the project, that they're gonna take their tax credits out and then we're gonna be left high and dry. There's no guarantees, but again, to get behind it, I support it, like I've said several times now, but to get out and be, be behind it and get the citizens to vote for it, and my name is on it, all three of our names are on it, I feel that I would like to see a more solid number somehow, some way. I don't know how we can do it, but that's my biggest concern. You know, it could be ten years from now, it could be fifteen years now, the three of us won't be sitting here.
Right.
And I don't want someone to come back and say, hey, old McDonald and Gates sold the town down the river, and the little bit of savings we're getting, we're eating up in electrical cost increases fifteen years down the road.
Right.
Those are my only concerns. When I asked the gentleman there two weeks ago about, you know, quantifying it and quantifying how John Winter did, he couldn't give me those answers.
Right.
The answers look good on paper, you can put anything on paper. Those are just my, but some of the more structural questions that I had had about the landfill itself, and I'm good with it, but again, my, my big hang-up is the money part.
So we're talking about the finance now?
Right, strictly, strictly.
The benefit that we get.
The benefit, again, I'm good with how they want to build them, I'm good with that part, but I'm, I'm a money guy.
Okay.
I'm hung up on the money.
Okay.
And that's, that's for our citizens, for the town deep river.
Yep. Jimmy, you have any thoughts?
No, I don't, I, not specifically, I think doing whatever we can when it comes to solar and green and all that is, is obviously good, there was a question brought up at the last Selectman's Meeting about the best use for that piece of property.
Yep.
And, and I, in my opinion, I don't know that anybody would want to build anything up there.
Right.
You know, on, on the dump, whether it's theoretically possible, or technically possible, or whatever, I think it's a great opportunity to use a piece of property that's on top of a landfill for good.
Yep.
And, you know, whether, whether it's theoretically or engineering possible to build a building there or do something like that, I don't, I don't think that piece of property is, is, is a piece of property that's correct for that type of use.
Right.
And I think the solar panel farm, if we can work out all the details from Dwayne's questions and all that, I think it's the proper use of the land.
Yep, okay. Well, I, I think so too, I, I appreciate your, your concerns, Dwayne, and I have some of the same concerns, in fact, I spent some time today researching, you know, how, how quickly the deterioration is not the right word, but the solar panels, the effectiveness of the solar panel is reduced annually, and what I was able to see was anywhere from a half, normal, normal processes about an average of about between a half and a percent of production per year is what you, what, what you see. Now, I think, but there was some question that, that, that number might be considerably lower than what Adam told us last week, so we're, we're gonna have to follow up on that, which is good and bad. We do need to make a decision relatively soon, so we can get to a town meeting, if we're going to go forward, we need to get this to a town meeting, so the contract can all be done, because there is a March deadline on the state and the EverSource kind of thing going on. But I think we can ask a couple more questions, I can certainly email any questions off about, about some of the, the rate of, of, of reduced benefit.
Well, that just kind of brings up, you know, if, if, being a number guy, I'm not, I'm not a numbers guy, but if the rate of degradation, or whatever the term is, is the two percent that has been floated out versus one percent, what, what does that, I mean, we're still, in my simple thinking, we're still gonna be ahead in twenty years.
Well, that's, that's what I was getting.
If it was upside down, then, but...
We don't, we don't know that.
No, we don't know it.
You could put any numbers on a piece of paper, Jim.
Yeah.
And again, we don't know where the, the electrical costs are gonna be for us as all taxpayers, even our own, even our own houses.
But that, that's an industry-related problem, we're not, we're not experimenting here, you know, per se, it's, it's something that other towns and other industries and other individuals have to weigh every day, and I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm just, I'm, yeah, and I, I hear your numbers, and I, I'm, I'm a numbers guy too, I'd like to know the numbers, but...
I've heard some people, from some people that are indirectly involved with when it was done at the YMCA.
Okay.
And they are not getting the returns that we're told to them.
Mm-hmm.
That's my concern, whether it's true...
But, but can, yeah, lead company?
Yes, so, whether, again, I want to see facts, I'm a facts guy.
I get that, Dwayne, but it...
But what I'm saying, hold on, what I'm saying is that, that's what I'm hearing from people that are a little more involved in me, because they're on the Board of Trustees for the YMCA, so that's why I'm just concerned there. Again, if you guys want to move forward, I, I, you don't need my vote to move forward.
No, no. No, I totally get that, and that's, I respect that, we've said that a number of times here, it's a three-person word.
But I just want, again, maybe I'm beating a dead horse, that's who, that's who I am.
You have a good question, and I don't know that we can get the answer that you want, which is a guaranteed fix, I don't know that we can get, or guaranteed reduction, I don't know that we can get that, that's one of the questions we can ask, if we can restructure the agreement, but the point, I think that Jim was making, and the point that I keep coming back to, is we're not really able to utilize that land for any benefit at this point now. So if, in the first year, we end up with forty thousand, by the end of the twenty, twenty years, we're at twenty thousand, are we still ahead of where we would be if we hadn't done anything? And I know that that's not a guarantee.
Right.
It's not costing us anything to install it, it's not costing us anything to maintain it. Now, there, there's just all kinds of things that are part of the contract, which is why we hire attorneys to look at that contract, is whether they can sell, they can sell the contract, they, they install it, they build it, they get their returns, which, maybe they have a bottom line, after they, after it degrades to a certain point, they're not gonna maintain it anymore, they sell it. But the contract will tell, will, will guarantee that our percentage of return will be the same throughout. Now, that, that sounds a little convoluted, it doesn't mean that the number's gonna stay, it's the percentage, we get a percentage of whatever, whatever electricity is generated, we get a percentage of that, and that percentage is a little over, a little, around one percent.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing about the property, the property's been sitting there for thirty-five plus years.
Yeah.
Okay? I'm not disagreeing about that on the property. My hang-up is the money part.
Yeah.
And that, that's all that it is, and again...
Right, and I, I don't know that I'm gonna be able to change your minds.
You probably won't, that's what I'm saying, you don't need my vote to move it forward.
I'm not gonna, I'm not really trying to change your mind so much, as I'm trying to move you over a little bit from a, unless like, it sounds like to me that you're saying, if I can't get a guaranteed return, I don't think this is worth...
No, I, I'm not saying that, I just want to see something a little bit more stable. I don't need a guarantee of a certain stable, because I am someone that will come back and say, I told you so.
Yeah.
That's who I am, I've always been that way.
I'm not, but I hope twenty years from now...
I hope, I, I hope that I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Again, I don't want to get into an argument over this, it's just the, these are a strong pet peeve of mine.
Yep.
Whether I'm out in left field, maybe so, I've been told that several times, but...
Yeah, I don't know.
It's a little easier to, in the discussion we had last, the last meeting, as far as quantification, being that that isn't on a building, and the, and the solar power generated for that building is accredited and fixed into the electrical account for that building, this is a standalone field of solar that generates X number of whatevers.
Yep.
And we get a check, I'm simplifying, for what it generates, you know, so the, the counting, the numbers are simpler with this type of solar field than it would be to have solar fields on all three of the buildings, and then trying to apply, well, it's five thousand this month, last month the electricity's gone up, it's now fifty-five hundred, and the panels are generating X to try and quantify that number, whether it be the lead company or the YMCA, or whatever, it's, that's probably a little more difficult, not impossible, but when you have a standalone field that is generating and we get a check every month, or however the, the funds would come in, it's a little more quantifiable, but...
Which, we heard that two weeks ago from, that's why they couldn't give you the numbers that John Winter...
Exactly.
That's not the issue, Jim.
Yep.
The issue is, they're, they're presenting these figures to us, and I just, I think it's great.
It's not that, I'm not talking about the same numbers, but it's a, it is numbers that are more quantifiable than, than on a building, but I, I understand where you're coming from, Dwayne, absolutely, yep, yep.
I think I do, I'm not sure.
Can I look at what's being proposed?
This is the, yeah, this is the packet that we had yesterday, last week.
So they think, can I talk now, or are we just, they give a percentage back, so if, let's say, John makes a hundred dollars, and I just get...
We get a dollar for it.
A dollar for every hundred bucks. And what do they think that it would...
The projections are anywhere from, the, the two that were being suggested to us are proposing between a forty-three thousand to a forty-seven thousand dollar savings per year, in the first year.
For savings or earnings?
Well, we don't earn anything, we don't get a check, we get a reduction in...
It gets credited.
Or it gets credited to our accounts. We've got more than five, but we are only entitled to credit on five of our accounts, so we take the five highest accounts, the ones that spend the most, and apply it towards those. You know, I, I think in the, in the end, I think we'll, the way I'm seeing this right now anyway, is that we'll end up, twenty years from now, we'll end up with a credit of somewhere in the vicinity of thirty-five thousand dollars. I can't speak from any experience, I'm basing that on, with the information that they gave us, the limited amount of research that I was able to do with, with degradation of solar panels, and how, what the technology today is, is doing. You know, it's an interesting idea, and maybe we can try to talk to some, some towns that have, that have done this, and maybe something like the YMCA, I wasn't familiar, but I know there's a field over there, I thought that was connected more to the lead company, but that probably is why. The question with the YMCA is, did they do something like this, or did they install it themselves?
I can find that out.
And I don't know the answer to that.
Alls I know is that, I've been told that the returns aren't what they were anticipating.
Yeah, what they thought they were gonna be, yeah.
Correct.
Yep. So here's what I'm gonna suggest, I, I had hoped that we would get a little further along with this today, so we could go into some possible negotiation talks, but let's, let's get some questions together, formulate some questions, I'll send them off to Adam tomorrow, when we get those answers, we'll, we'll have this conversation in a couple of weeks, and we'll have to move forward at that point, we'll make a decision one way or the other, and then whatever that decision is, we'll go with it.
Well, if they can quantify some of the concerns of, the money concerns that Dwayne had, that'd be great.
Yeah.
You know?
Again.
It's, it's, they can, I don't think they can.
You can move forward tonight, I guess.
No, no, let's get the answers, I want, I want better answers on, on the degradation, the rate of degradation.
I just don't want to be the one that's, that's holding everything up, and if you two feel strongly about it...
I do feel strongly about it, but I want to have the answers.
We all have to agree all the time.
And, and no, and that's where your input in the construction industry and all that kind of stuff is very valuable, with the, with the connections and the, and whatnot that you have, you have a little different insight than, than I have, and, and to it, you know, it's, so I, I, I a hundred percent, I, I have no problem with that, and if we can get a couple more numbers, then maybe we can address it in another couple of weeks.
If we can do this in two weeks.
And then move forward and see what happens.
Then the way I see it is...
And then maybe Dwayne will go, oh, okay, that's, that works for me, or, or he might not, you know, it's, yeah.
We'll see how we move forward, let's get the answers to a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Because I don't want to move it forward, and I certainly don't want to move it to a town meeting, with speculation about what these, what these numbers are, you know, let's get these numbers. I don't think that this is the type of technology where we can say, we're going to get this, you know, the weather changes, if we get, if we get ten feet of snow, there's gonna be less...
Well, that was a question, I was gonna ask him.
The weather's...
That's my hang-up, I guess, because on that piece of paper, they said the first year we're gonna get X.
Yep.
What happens the first year, we get thirty-eight thousand?
Yep.
You don't think some citizens are gonna come to the Selectman's Meeting and say, hey, you guys said last November seventeenth, or whatever it is tonight, that we were gonna get X?
Yep.
Those are my concerns.
Yep, and, and the thing about it is, and I think I've tried anyway, to say all along the way, that these are not guaranteed numbers, these are, these are projected numbers.
And that might be, that might be the industry, and that's maybe, that's possibly the best that it can, well, I know, but that might be the best that the industry can do, and they can't give the exact numbers that Dwayne or other people, you know, it'd be nice to have an exact number, I, you know, but the industry might not be able to do that, because of, we might have a blizzard and there's three feet of snow on the panels, and who clears the snow off, or does Mother Nature clear the snow off of the panels, you know?
Yeah.
Mother Nature is what I...
I just, I still feel pretty strongly that whether it's forty-seven thousand dollars as a, as a cap, or as, or twenty thousand dollars, it's still something that contributes towards our energy costs, and, and I think that's a positive, that's positive enough to move it forward, because there is no cost to us, we're not losing land that we could be renting, we're not losing land that we're going to put a municipal building on, we're taking a field that's, that's really, all it's doing is taking a day away from the one, somebody on the town.
Can we lease the land?
Well, we could lease the land.
To a fixed number, twenty-year lease?
Well, that's what Dwayne suggested earlier, and we're gonna talk about that, I don't know that, I don't know that that's something that these guys will do.
I mean, the land is, you'll never be able to build over there.
Exactly, well, yeah.
Well, that's, I don't know that that's for sure, but it's...
Well, that was the conversation two weeks ago, is somebody mentioned that it's now, when the technology is available, it is buildable, but I, I don't know if it is or not, and, and who would want to build on it if it was, because of where it is, you know, so...
Okay, so let's, let's table this for now.
Okay.
We'll get some answers, you and I can formulate a couple more questions, Jim, if you have any input on that, let's have it, we'll send them off, hopefully tomorrow, but, oh, you know, but by the end of the weekend, so we'll, we'll have a, a week to get some answers, and then we can have another conversation. All right, thanks. There's nothing else on the agenda, I would wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, good trails.
Same to you, same to everybody, absolutely.
There's a couple things we're gonna talk about at Board of Finance, but I'm not sure if everybody that watches this will, is gonna watch that. One of the things that we have to start doing, we're gonna do this in December, I hope, is, if you remember when we put the budget together, state, the state legislature created a law that requires body cameras and car cameras on all of our police officers, there's, there's still nothing concrete from the state police as to whether or not we're going to be able to connect into their server, which is, which is number one, a big savings, but also a big time, time savings, because there's, they monitor all of that, so if we get FO, if, if something happens, and it gets FO-ed, it goes through the state, not through our own thing, and that, that's a huge expense, but we're gonna talk about that tonight, just to introduce to people that we didn't budget for, because we didn't know what it's gonna cost. We're starting to get some of those numbers, we're starting to get some of that information, and I want everybody to just be aware that there's going to be a pretty good expense, we're gonna have to go to town, it's gonna be sizable enough that we're gonna have to go to town meeting to bring that money back.
We can't use any money from the AAR.
AR does not pay for that.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I was gonna ask.
Who's the company that's...
Well, there's a couple different companies, Taser is one company that does it, I can't remember the name of the company that we're looking for.
There's a, there's a company that I know that they have a Samsung phone, and it's a Dex program, and it ties into their computers in their car.
Yeah.
So on their cellphone, it becomes a recorder of the same plan, and it will tie into the computer system.
Yeah, we've been talking about that, there are some limitations to that, that the camera doesn't have, as far as weather and, and things like that, it's, but we did look into that, that was the first thing, because that's, that's the cheapest way.
The Samsung has a cop version now.
Okay.
Yeah, it ties in with the company.
That was the cheapest way to do it.
Yeah, I gave you some info on that.
Yeah, okay.
This company, Gamber Johnson, has all their computer systems with the cop cars.
On the subject of police, you know, we've had, we've had people come in and, you know, complain about speeding and all that, I, I don't know, I, my suggestion maybe, that maybe every couple of months, maybe Tom comes in or something and gives us, gives the Selectman a, just a basic traffic report, or police report, without getting into confidential data or whatever, but...
We've been, we've been talking about, been talking about some different things for that as well, one of which they're buying, we're buying some digital, there's more, more things, software for their computers, so they can actually print out the tickets right on the computer instead of writing them out, apparently it increases the amount of tickets written by six hundred percent, so, I don't know, I don't know what that means, but it's, it's going to make it a little bit easier, we're still, we're still, are being very active in getting people, in fact, I'm starting to get complaints that people are not liking the patrol.
Well, that's, and that's where, you know, just in my mind, it's, it's nice for people to know that that is happening, so...
No, it's happening, we're actually, we had a conversation this morning about the benefit and negatives to something like a January sixteenth is Speeding Enforcement Day. If you, if you get caught, you're getting a ticket, period, end of story.
Regardless.
No talk about it, no nothing, that's the end of it, whether you're going one mile an hour, or twenty miles an hour, and, you know, advertising it so everybody knows about it, and then you're just doing it. No, there is not.
No, propose.
She's taking that day off.
Not driving that day, no, that, you know, those are just thoughts that we're having about how we can try and, try and alleviate some of this, you know, we're getting a lot of calls now, people want stop signs all over the place, and, and that really, that's, is not proven to, to, to slow traffic down in general, in fact, depending on where the stop signs are, it, it adds more of a detriment to the neighborhood with people accelerating and stopping.
That's what I've heard, the one right up by Chesterfields in Chester, they put one in there, and then everybody's stopping, especially the motorcycles, and they actually generate more...
Well, Union Street is a big deal, because there's a lot of truck traffic that goes up Union Street.
Oh, goes up, okay.
And, and, and having them stop and accelerate, you know, start up again, is not necessarily the best thing for the neighborhood, you know, so we just try to enforce it a little more, but we'll see if we can get Tom to come in and give us a report on what's going on, but I don't, I don't, I was actually had something else I was trying to think of, but I can't, and I, right now, so...
Shot it right out of your head when I brought mine up.
So I'll take a motion to adjourn, we can have a good...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, this is November 23, 2021, and this is a regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Fighters.
Turn that off. Okay, John?
Yeah?
Mute yourself.
Not that we do not wish to have participation in our meeting, but start by muting yourself. All right, folks, every, annually, at our November meeting, it is time to elect our officers, actually, on the agenda, it says nominate our officers, but we will take it all the way into actually choosing our officers, and the tradition has been that Laurie would very dramatically take this seat and hold the election. Laurie's not with us this evening, so absent Laurie, and absent anyone taking any issue, I will take the, lead the election, I will be the election official. I suggest we need to elect two people, one being a chairman, and one being a vice chairman, if for some reason the chairman cannot attend, the vice chairman would recognize that obligation to run the meeting. Would anyone like to place anyone's name in nomination for chairman?
You were gonna put Buzz's name in, correct?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you. With Bill's permission, I'm going to, I'm gonna nominate the man who's been our chairman for several years, who does a fine job, works lots and lots of hours that you never see, it's all behind the scenes, and takes good care of his commission, so I would nominate Bud Eckenroth for chairman.
I have a first, does anyone wish to second?
Second.
Second, does anyone wish to carry on any discussion on that, further discussion?
Or is there any other nomination?
Oh, excellent, well, we got first and second, shouldn't we know, but excellent, any other nominations? All right, hearing none, does anyone wish to discuss the name placed in, in, name placed? All right, I feel like there should be people marching through with banners or something like that, but hearing no other names, let us close the election for chairman, all those in favor of George J. Eckenroth being chairman for another twelve months, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye, thank, or please, say nay. So, all right, that then brings, and thank you very much, it is, and I do not wish to minimize the how humble I am to be chosen by those who have been chosen, so it is, I appreciate your, your faith in me. With that, that uncomfortable acceptance speech, I would like anyone wish to be vice chairman, would anyone like to place a name in nomination for vice chairman?
Wonder about that tonight.
I'm going to suggest Russ, who has been on the committee for a while.
Eight years.
Bill, would you like the job?
No, I, because I can't.
Okay, if, you're like General Serben, chairman, if nominated, I will not serve, all right? John, is that of interest to you?
He's muted.
Yeah, that's fine with me, yep.
What is fine with you, did you become vice chair, or did Russ become vice chair?
I thought Russ was gonna be.
Russ. All right, thank you, well, I wanted to make sure everyone had their opportunity. A lot of benefits flow from these exotic titles in the town of Deep River. All right, I have placed Russ's name in, in nomination, do I have a second? Thank you. Any other names? Absent none, would anyone wish to discuss this? Absent, no further discussion, all those in favor of Russ serving for the next twelve months as vice chairman, catchy phrase, vice, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, we will see you next November. With that behind us, let us move to approval of the minutes of the... Um, with that behind us, let us move to approval of the minutes of the October twenty-sixth meeting.
I'll make motion, we approve the minutes of the October Board of Finance meeting.
Thank you. All those in favor of, all those.
Need a second?
Need a second? There's a lot of work on you. Uh, all those in favor of accept discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Um.
Well done, and you got it all.
Maybe we should do it here. Um, there was some confusion which I shared with you at the October twenty-sixth meeting. Angus had sent us an email discussing his, uh, recommendations of how to transfer funds from funds that had not fully been spent to cover over expenditures. It is my theory that we all agreed to that, but before we took the vote, we discussed the concept of funding work being done in the town garage that had the work, the concept began in the prior year's budget, and I and Angus were recommending that it be, continue to be funded out of last year's budget. We had a fairly long discussion on that, but it got confusing, if you look at the video, what we actually approved. Whether we approved yes fund the garage of the last year and did not go to the transfers. Uh, so I'd like to clarify, would someone give me a nomination to accept the recommendations made by Angus at the last meeting?
Let me ask about the recommendations too. Is it, is the work not completed because it's, it ran over? Or it just didn't get completed?
Oh, it didn't get completed. Materials were not available.
Alright, so it's, it's within budget.
Yes.
Then, last year's budget far along, mister.
When we read the report, we're on the last year's budget, which we have surplus, more out of this year's budget, which is still a mess. You can go last year, it makes sense. That's conclusion.
It was included last year, or maybe elsewhere.
That's correct, yes.
Alright, so I, I wanna make sure that I understand, and I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, are you approving now the, the recommendation of the over expended, the manipulation of the funds?
Correct.
Or the, uh, the con, the, the town garage repair?
The, uh, we're, the former is what I'm asking for, because in that was included funding of the garage.
Alright, now the funding for the garage that was not used.
Yeah.
Just disappears, correct?
Not if we do this. If we do this.
Up to this point, it's disappeared. We have not voted yet, let's say.
Yeah.
So that fund, that money has disappeared.
That money will go, it falls right back into the surplus with all the rest of it.
Okay, it disappears from that budget?
Yes, yep.
Alright, okay. Now it just goes back to that budget?
That's right.
Okay, I have no problem.
That is correct, alright. Are we, um, clear? Joyce, are you clear?
Yeah, just make sure your motion is extremely clear of what you're approving.
We are approving, we are reapproving is my theory, but we are approving the, uh, transfers that Angus had suggested to us, laid out to us in the last month, uh, last month's, uh, meeting. Um, I need a second for that, since I made it.
I don't know if you can make one, but I'll tell you what, I'll make the motion, just as you said it.
Okay.
If I may.
I'll second it, because we've got a lot of people here to do that.
There is a lot of pressure on us to do that. Uh, for, all those in favor of approving the memo and the transfers as outlined in a, uh, email or a memo that Angus sent to us last month, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you, John. Uh, audience of citizens, I see none either present or, uh, coming in my video, so we will move on. Uh, treasurer's report, Tommy.
Okay, thanks. Uh, before I get to the actual deposit report, um, just wanted to go over the, I, I actually, uh, called James Sullivan from Essex Financial Services last month. I said I would try to get something set up. Um, he gave me a couple of dates, uh, December fifteenth, which is a Wednesday, because we had discussed a meeting on, on Wednesday, or December twenty-second. Uh, probably the, uh, the fifteenth would be better, uh, because we're getting around, you know, the holiday on, on December twenty-second, if that's, if that's possible. And as far as, uh, he said he's flexible where we can, you can, uh, if you wanna meet during the day, you can meet during the day. If you wanna meet, uh, afterwards in the afternoon, you can certainly do that. He said one thing that has to be addressed is the, um, there's an asset reallocation, uh, you know, regarding, you know, what we have as far as percentages in stocks versus percentages in, in bonds. So, um, he'd like to have that addressed before the end of the year, and there would be some forms that have to be, um, filled out or signed. So that's probably, you know, gonna come to a head.
Yep.
Whenever we do meet. So, having said that, is, uh, is the fifteenth okay with, uh, so that would be Angus and Bud and, uh, myself and, uh, Peter Lewis and whoever is the representative at the.
Someone for the fire commissioner.
Fire, yeah, so I have to try to get ahold of someone there.
Yep. Um, I think that's okay with me. What time are you talking about?
It's up to you, whether, because I, you know, I know before you said, well, we can maybe meet during the day.
Um, I've got an eleven o'clock, but we could do, um, nine?
Fifteenth, that's a Wednesday, that should be fine. Nine o'clock is good. Um, there are others.
Yeah, I'll reach out to the fire commissioner.
You have Pete Lewis, I'll have to get ahold of Pete.
Pete's here as, I represent the U.
Right, yes.
We have fire, one of the fire commissioners.
Fire commissioner, yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure who, uh, I know, uh, Steve.
It'd probably be Steve David, he's the chair right now.
Is he?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have to get.
Yeah, I'll get in touch with Steve.
Will you, okay.
And Pete's, uh, Pete went to Florida, I'll send him a note too.
Alright, so, okay, so December fifteenth at nine o'clock?
Yep.
Okay, good, thanks. Um, and then if we just look at the deposit report, um, right now we stand total, general fund deposits are over five, five and a half million dollars, or five million, five twenty-eight, four ninety-nine, three cents. Uh, if we compare that to where we were last month, we're down, um, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Certainly in, in very good shape as we head toward, you know, the end of the, uh, uh, end of the calendar year. Um, I did make three transfers, uh, this last month, uh, one on October twenty-fifth for two hundred thousand, one on eleven, eight for four hundred thousand, and one on eleven sixteen for five hundred thousand. So, a million, one hundred thousand, uh, actually went from our Liberty Bank Money Market Account into our Citizens Bank, uh, general, general fund account. Uh, as far as the total balances, if you look at the bottom of the page, um, we've got seven million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and, and, uh, total accounts, uh, that's, uh, down from seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, sixty-four dollars, uh, from, from a month ago. Uh, I did talk to today, Melissa Herg had called me, she's the vice president, uh, of government banking at Liberty Bank, takes care of, uh, municipalities, and she told me that, uh, that we have to, they have to reduce our rate. Right now, we're at point two-five on one account and point two-oh on the other two accounts. Um, and she, she would have to reduce our rate to point one-five. And, uh, I told her, I said, you know, we actually have nine accounts with Liberty Bank of over five million, six hundred thousand at this time, and it, you know, it probably, you know, go up to, uh, you know, when the rev, tax revenue monies come in, will be over, you know, seven or eight thousand dollars. And she says, I realize that. She said that we have no other municipality that is actually getting what you're getting. I said, really? She says, absolutely. The point one-five is the highest that they, they have. Um, and, you know, I know, I know rates are, yeah, and the last time I had this conversation with her was back in March, where actually I was able to put her off, um, for a while, but this, she, uh, she just said, and she said, you know, to tell you the truth, she said, uh, you know, all the accounts that you have, you know, they're, they're, uh, there's no fees, there's, uh, there's no, no cost to you. And they have, uh, they have waived our, uh, wire transfer fees, so whenever I do make a wire transfer, uh, and it's usually twenty dollars, they will refund it back to me. And I, I said to her, well, I'd like that to continue, and she says, oh, there's no, no problem with that. Um, but, and, and having said that, if, based on where we are today, uh, the rates are extremely low. Uh, I think if you even went out there trying to get anything better than we've had, I think it'd be very, you know, be, be very difficult.
Have you looked, have you looked from time to time, we can give our, give our, give, I'm starting, I'm starting with word give. We can use state investment funds for these short-term investments. Have you looked?
I have looked into the state before, and their rates are, weren't, um, even as competitive as, as, see, I can look again, um, and just see where.
I, I am particularly fond of your phrase that we, we are not charged fees.
No, we're not, well, but, but having said that, Bud, they don't have our operating account either. So that's, uh, you know, usually with your operating account, you get a earning, earnings credit based on what your, you know, your overall balances, balances are, uh, but they don't have our, uh, we don't, you know, we don't have, you know, our operating accounts with Citizens Bank. Uh, but, you know, all of these accounts that we have are, you know, like money market accounts, uh, savings or checking accounts, but, yeah, it's free, you know, free checking and there's no, no fees to us on any of those accounts that we have with Liberty Bank.
Liberty Bank. There are, two years ago, we, we introduced a line item for bank fees in the budget. Do you remember that? Not much, six thousand dollars, something like that. Not Liberty, I guess is what you're saying to me, right?
Uh, the, well, the, the Citizens Bank, the, uh, uh, they don't, we don't get any interest on our money with Citizens Bank. So it's kind of an offset, because they, they have the same thing, your earnings, like an earnings credit. She did tell me that if we had to, um, we would probably have to keep two or three million dollars in the, in the account to get, to get like a offset, so we wouldn't have any fees, so.
Excuse me. Hey, John, please mute again, thanks.
Excellent, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I think that's, you know, so I just wanted to, you know, bring that to, to our attention. And, and again, it's, it's just, I think it's just the, uh, the nature of the beast today that, uh, rates are extremely low.
Do, do you mind if I ask a question? Um, what is our allegiance to citizens now? Liberty, you know, I, I don't have any problem with Liberty. I think those rates are where we're at. Citizens is no longer in town, um, understanding that they're relatively local with, I think they're, Westbrook's the closest one, or Clayton?
Clayton.
Yeah. Do we have any real allegiance to them?
No, you know, and to tell you the truth, we have like four accounts with, with citizens, uh, as you can, you know, see here. One is just three hundred and twenty-four dollars, uh, so we don't have huge accounts. Uh, we have the WPCA checking account with them and the memorial fund, the community fund with them.
And I, I like not having all our eggs in one basket, so I'm not suggesting we go to Liberty.
Yeah.
But there are other banks around. You know, Old Saver's certainly got some banks in Essex. We're, we're starting to put our toes into Essex now that you're fully retired. Um, and they're a local bank.
I, I, I would say, I, you know, I, it, there's, you know, I talked to Kathy, there's, there's a lot of work that would have to be done to, if we're going to another bank, I, you know, unless we're not satisfied, totally not satisfied with them. And, uh, I, you know, I have, you know, I think we have a decent, you know, relationship with them. I think it would be, you know, pretty difficult to, and I, you know, and to tell you the truth, I think, uh, any bank you go to, it's usually a commercial bank where you probably, you know, put, put the funds in.
Yeah.
It's going to be, uh, pretty much probably the same.
Okay.
I wouldn't see a big, I wouldn't see a big difference.
Yep, that's what I'm not sure about, you know, if it would be worth, just to walk into this key and see what Key Bank is doing or something.
And that's, you know, that's what I said to her today too. I said, you know, we have nine accounts, we've got like over, you know, five and a half million dollars with you. Uh, we have eight other accounts between, you know, uh, Citizens and Essex Savings Bank with, uh, a total of like a million, a million eight. So they certainly have, Liberty certainly has a, a large percentage of our money.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't suggest anything more with Liberty, but, but, you know, yes, we've had a longstanding relationship with citizens and, and I think that's good.
And I had brought that up to Kathy, and she, she, she got pretty upset about that, because she said, you know, that.
Yeah, there's Dime, there's Webster, there's, there's other little banks, Connecticut-based banks.
But they're not that close to us either. We're the, the closest dime bank.
Dime's a long ride away, but, uh, Key's right in Saver, and, you know, there are some other larger banks.
You know, tell you, I don't think that, I don't think you'd see, because, you know, again, we don't keep, we pretty much keep the minimum with, with that.
Yeah.
We're like here with like four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's not a lot of money. Uh, so, and we try to keep that, keep that as low as possible, really.
Yeah, but then there's, you know, we've got WPCAs and others, that's about six hundred thousand.
But I'm just talking about as far as the.
Operating fund, yeah.
Operating account, yes. I mean, certainly I can do whatever you want to, you know, look into.
No, I'm just suggesting, and I'm not telling you that, Ellen is suggesting.
To, to attract new deposits of large banks, do, do banks give you a front-end incentive they may eventually take away?
Give the town a new toaster for open.
Getting a toaster and blankets, uh?
You know, because if you look at, you know, what, what we keep in that, that, uh, that account, the general fund account, you know, it's, it's, the money just coming in and going out, pretty much, and, uh, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars with a, a larger commercial bank is.
Nothing.
Nothing at all, yeah. I don't think this will be an enticement to pretty much any.
No, I was just, you know, I'm looking at it, it's actually, I think it's over a million.
Actually, Angus is right, it's over a million. I don't think that should attract anybody's attention. But anyway, it's something to think about.
Well, in fact, when I talked to Melissa, you know, I, you know, I thought, you know, five and a half, oh, she said, well, a lot of our municipal accounts, well, they must have a lot of city accounts too, because she said they were over fifty million dollars.
So, I said, okay.
But, but anyway, something to think about. Um, let's see, what else? Oh, and, uh, we do have a payment due in December. Uh, it's our Kirtland, uh, River Street Sewer Project with the USDA. Uh, that original, uh, originally was for two million, nine hundred and ten thousand dollars for forty years. So it was going from two thousand sixteen to two thousand fifty-five. Uh, we've made five payments on that account. Um, the rate is two point six-two-five percent. Uh, and the payment that's due on December seventeenth, which is automatically deducted from, uh, our, our operating account, will be a hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars, just, just to, to let you know that. So our principal balance, uh, will be down, when we make that payment, will be down to two million, one ninety-nine, seven twenty-six. Let's see what else. Uh, oh, we did receive our, uh, education equalization grant monies, uh, on October twenty-ninth for four hundred and seventeen thousand, eight sixty-four. That's one quarter of the amount, uh, and if, right now, if you look in our, there's a light item there for a million, six sixty-two, eight seventy, so that's actually what we'll be getting from, for the, uh, ESC monies. And the next one, the next payment that we'll receive is another quarter, which will be on January twenty-ninth. And then we receive, uh, half of that amount on, on April thirtieth. The American Rescue Plan Act, you know, I was gonna ask you, Angus, on that one, uh, because we did set up this account. Is there, I know we're talking about having an advisory committee.
We've had some individuals that have approached and some are working on some things.
Just to know where we stood with that, uh, but, you know, the account is open, we are getting a little interest. As I said last month, we do get a little interest on that money. Um, since we opened the account, we've gotten ninety-four dollars and ninety-seven cents in interest, but, uh, but anyways, they're ready to be used, so.
Yeah, I expect that in December we'll have some, some, um, recommendations, and hopefully by the town meeting will end in January.
Didn't the state make some sort of an announcement today that they wanna require every town to audit?
Yeah, well, I think that's because of the problem, yes, exactly.
Yep, that's what I anticipated, as soon as I saw that somewhere.
That the state just mandated that, I think all towns have an independent audit as to how they spend those funds because of what happened in West Haven.
It was over six hundred, six hundred thousand dollars.
Just, yeah.
Gambling, a gambling.
Gambling, yeah, supposedly, yeah.
Was that right? I didn't hear that part of it.
It was a state rep, actually.
It was a state rep and, uh, something for the town or the city.
Yes, he worked for the city of West Haven.
Yep, that's right.
Interesting, so, we would ask auditors to do that?
I'm looking into that, I, I'm not sure what the requirement, so.
Yeah, they said they sent the email today.
Just independent audit, to manage how we're spending it. I'm actually looking into, uh, I'm actually looking into, uh, a grant writer slash advisor as to how, you know, to, to, to confirm all of the things that we're thinking about spending on, to make sure that, to ensure that they are in fact eligible. And that money, any salary for that person is paid out of the ARPA money, so.
We have, we have an auditor who seems to be busy, hence why they keep pushing off our orders. I'm just curious, it seemed like it would be the same skills that would be needed.
Yeah, I would, I would, yeah, that's part of what I'm researching, is whether it's something that they can, we can just, um, you know, marry this into that, but, but I'm not sure about that.
All right, thank you, John.
Thanks a lot.
Recommendations of Selectman, and I'll let Angus and Selectman answer this, but it, based on conversation with Angus, like, we don't have any recommendations or actions, action that I've asked Angus to begin to share some of his thoughts on future capital needs.
We have a couple of things, uh, capital-wise, first of which, um, everyone here should already be aware of, or maybe keep in the back of your minds, um, when we prepared this budget, we knew that we were going to be required to, um, to purchase body cameras and car cameras for our police department. But we didn't know how much that was going to be, so we left that knowing that we were going to have to, to address it. And, and that time is coming, is coming. We, these need to be installed at this point, they still need to be installed by, um, by July. So, um, in the research that we've done and some of the studies, just the, uh, the questions that we've asked in some of the companies, we're probably gonna need to order this stuff by January in order to get it and get it installed. So, at next month's meeting, I will have a good idea of what the cost is going to be and, uh, and who we're going to be going with. This is cameras, for the body cameras, cameras for cars, a server to, to store the information on. And, you know, we're looking, looking into the cost of it, so I would suggest we're looking at probably about $50,000.
And it's, it's law, we have to do.
Oh, we absolutely have to.
Yeah, I was just clarifying that we have to do.
The question, and what I'm really hanging on to is whether or not we can, uh, because we are a resident trooper town, whether or not we are allowed to be able to utilize the state police server for this. And that, that will be a tremendous savings for us, not only in money, but of time and, and potential effort, if, if, so. So that's coming, I don't have finished numbers for you yet, Tom, uh, Tom Keelo, Trooper Tom Keelo and I are working pretty hard on trying to find the best, best thing for D-Forever.
My technical skills are extremely limited, but where you stored seems to have a ongoing obligation to make sure you can retrieve it, uh, and acceptors to that, that is no minor ongoing obligation.
No, it's not, and I, I, I'm surprised that the legislation didn't address that. But, you know, that's, we are where we are right now, uh, and I don't, I don't expect, I haven't seen anything that says legislation is going to readdress how that can be accommodated, so.
That's where it'd be good if the state allowed us to use it, and they, they have it.
Yeah, well, you know, the state police, just, they're pretty undermanned already, and to try and find more people to manage, you know, the, whatever number of towns there are, is going to be difficult. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I just wanna keep doing this. Hey, John, uh, if you wouldn't mind, please, pushing your mute while we're, while you're driving, thanks.
With that, my, I watch TV shows that people can access, uh, police cameras from anywhere in the world and see what happened years ago, yeah. That's the way to have it on TV, that's exactly. So it's not come home and put it in the drawer here in East River, so, yeah.
So that's something that we will have a longer, bigger conversation, and will be a recommendation, probably in December.
Can you turn your mute, mute, John?
I can mute him, I think, but.
It just means that John's.
If we need him to respond, it's harder to concentrate. Okay, uh, so that's that, and that's coming next month, right for Christmas time.
And your anticipation is, that is not in our budget?
That is not in our budget.
It's a large enough dollar amount that we will have to go to a town meeting? And we will have to figure out a way to fund.
Mm-hmm, yep. Uh, the next item of capital is, in our, in our capital improvement plan, we have a plow truck, um, that is, uh, in line to, to get purchased next year. Um, in, in an effort to get ready for that, we, we started doing a little research. The concern that I have is, right now, those trucks are a year and a half out. So if we ordered it today, just similar to the fire truck, if we ordered it today, it would be a year and a half before we took delivery.
That's a dumb truck, amazing.
Yeah, it's pretty crazy.
Yeah.
We're looking right now, it's about $175,000 purchase, $180,000. I'm not sure, it's not, this is not a recommendation at all, it's just something that, that we want to think about. Do we want to maybe pull into our, we've got, we've got, our surplus is above the magic number that we've been working at at 12 or 13%, do we want to use some of that money for a capital expenditure? Um, I'm not recommending that at this time, but it's something I'd like to, everyone to mull over and, and think about for some time next. And, and if so, do we want to do that sooner rather than later? So that we can get this truck ordered and have it, have it in a, in a reasonable amount of time.
Now, we've got that, uh, money in a capital non-recurring fund.
Right.
That's $318,000.
Yep, and that would, that would cover this as well, so.
I don't want to have to do a big sale for that.
Nope.
Be a lot of food.
A lot of cupcakes.
Yep.
Car washes.
I'm too old for those car washes.
So that's.
Is there, can I ask a question also?
Sure.
This is replacing a truck that is, how old, if you know that?
I, I don't know that, it's, it was, the truck that needs to be replacing right now is, uh, is Smitty's old truck.
Oh, so it's.
It's been, it's been around for a long time. But it is, we've, we've already, um, we put floors in it five years ago. Um, and it, I, the truck is just, it's.
It's tired.
It's time for it to be, to be replaced. It's actually beyond time, five years ago, we didn't replace it, uh, we put the floors in it.
I actually talked with the town crew one day, more than a few weeks ago, and they were telling me exactly that, putting the new floor in.
Yep.
New floors in the cab.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we've replaced.
Because of the sanding and everything.
And we've replaced the, the bed already in it as well, that was, um, that was, it might have been the same time.
Yeah.
So.
There are products out there where you can apply to help longevity of these vehicles.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, maybe.
And we do that.
If the guy should look at it, there's companies called New Hampshire Coatings and whatnot, that, that will spray and, they don't guarantee no rust, but you won't have to replace the floors, I can almost guarantee that.
Well, that truck was pretty old.
Yeah, oh, yeah, age is, age is, age is age.
Yeah, so, so that's something I, I want to, I would like everyone to think about and, um, you know, we'll continue that conversation.
If I get this right, you're thinking of, you're thinking of taking the $195,000 of this year's surplus or next year's?
We can take.
Asking for the money.
That's what, that's what I'm asking everyone to think about. I'm not recommending anything at this time, although I am, I am leaning towards either using our capital non-recurring or some of the money from, from our surplus, putting it in the capital non-recurring and then using that cash as opposed to, as opposed to borrowing for this, we've got the, we've got the cash. Um, we're gonna be putting a big borrow in on the, on the fire truck, I'm not sure that we need to do that for this as well. Um, and I think it might be, uh, and it will still keep, it won't dig into our, uh, surplus to a point where it's gonna reduce it to, to lower than what we've got, or, you know, we're in that 12, 13%. So, and that's, I think, something that, that I do recommend, that this group continued to talk about, is whether that 13% is the number that we're comfortable with, um, or, or not.
Is there advantage going, thinking about the same, doing something beforehand or doing something later on?
Uh, the advantage, the advantage that I see to doing it now is mostly that we will have the truck in, in, in 18 months, if we wait until the next year's budget to put it in that budget, that's another six months behind.
So we're talking, we're talking a 2023 truck?
Yeah.
If you do it now?
Yeah.
And if you don't, then it's 2020.
Yeah, 2020, we were looking at a 2023 Frayliner.
Yeah, okay, it's amazing, yeah.
Yeah, um, I, I think there is an advantage to that, I, I think we.
There is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I really don't care about your truck. But I care about the cost.
I know, I know, and you don't know what's gonna happen with cost, what's gonna happen with, what's gonna happen with raw materials, I don't know. You know, you can speculate, speculate either side, if I could tell you the future, I wouldn't be hanging on. So, um, we can only, we can only do our best to, to, to get the information, and I think the information is to, again, I'm not recommending this, but I'd like everyone to think about how, how we might best move forward with, with this purchase. The last thing that I'd like to talk to you about is, um, has to do with our, our IT. We spoke last time about our, um, cybersecurity and things like that, but we've also got, um, you know, we're working on getting specs and getting bids on, on, with, using the STEEP grant to, to update all of our computers here in town. I'm, I'm, don't have the technical capability of, of understanding all of the things that they're talking about when they, when they describe what we're, what we're getting. Um, I don't think it's appropriate for us to use the person that we're using now, that our, our IT person now, because he's one of the people that are bidding on this. I would like to hire a consultant to come in and help us prepare this spec. Someone who is not going to be bidding on it, someone who's independent of this process, but someone who can advise us to, um, and can advise us as to what we're getting, whether we're comparing apples to apples, what, you know, what, how we're buying, what we're buying, and whether we're getting the best value for what we're doing. I don't know what that cost would be, I want to, again, I'd like to talk about it with you.
I, I have someone to recommend, half an hour.
That'd be great.
He, he works for my company, doing exactly this type of thing, uh, and he's not going to bid on it, and I know that.
Yep.
But, but he, he knows.
That would be great.
He's, he's just great.
I just want someone that's independent of this, and someone who's got no interest in it other than they're helping the people make the right decision. I don't know what that cost will be, I'll let you guys know, but I would like to move that along relatively quickly because it's, we need the computers in town.
You have to find the information that you need when you need it, and, and I think that's wise, that's a good one.
And that's it for me.
You want us to move on that last one and give you authority to spend up to, or, I don't even know what the word is, they're not just throwing out ideas.
I think that would be great, because then I could move forward, I don't, the trouble is, I don't have an idea of what that cost would be.
I have an idea for, to give a number.
You should probably have muted, in case he has, in case he has it.
Is he waving his hand?
No, he's, he doesn't have the picture up. In case he wants to participate.
He's done unmute himself.
Okay.
So there's no desire to Angus, uh, is there a desire to give Angus funding to move forward and enter a contract up to a certain amount, or people want more?
You know, why don't we, if it's okay, this is, I'm guessing at this number, up to $5,000, if we need to, if we need to increase that, we can come back to you, if we don't need that much, we don't need that much.
What's anyone think, would you like to have a number?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, $5,000.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we allow Angus to spend up to $5,000 to get a consultant to help with, and what is it?
IT purchase, IT, um, computer upgrades.
Right, 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 IT purchase, computer upgrades, good.
Now, we have an IT line item, so what I guess we're saying is, we will address it as those costs, do not spend word five, as those costs come in, we will see it as an over expenditure and we will acknowledge the over expenditure during the year, is that okay with me?
Yeah, yeah.
Which is sort of what we said last month, too. Yes?
This, this, this all makes sense to me.
All makes sense, we're going, we have a line item where those kinds of things are concerned, uh, be addressed. It has a number which we will no doubt exceed, I'm not surprised, we, I think we may have gotten close to exceeding it already, but I think the concept is continue to proceed, the two things we've talked about, seeking support from our help room, and we as a group will deal with that over expenditure, or acknowledge that over expenditure. And our minute should say that we authorize the Selectman to proceed and we recognize that it is an over expenditure.
Do we need to second the motion and vote on it?
Okay. So we're going to, you have made a motion, Bill has seconded it, and we will vote that we rec, we authorize the, first Selectman to go out and seek assistance and we will charge that, those costs not to exceed $5,000 or just, I forget what we call that line, IT line.
I think it's computer support.
Who would have thought? All right, all those in favor of Russ's authorization seconded by Bill, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Did John speak?
No, but, no, but he's, we're having, we're having, we're having problems.
He's nodding.
He'll agree.
Um, Angus, is that, that is an excellent, I'm concerned, do you have more things you want to spend?
I wish he stood in the case.
What happened, you decided to pause. Uh, let's go back and grab one of the thoughts that Angus commented on, and it is merely a comment, give the context. I estimate, coming out of the June 30 budget, that we would have a surplus of approximately $600,000 up. The auditors are working on those numbers, and we said at the time I said that, that we would wait for the auditors to be finished with the audit, to confirm whether we are, I'm close or I'm not close. So that is, I believe, what we're talking about in the potential, what should we do with that surplus? It puts us over, and we, we have nodded to each other that 13 seems to be about a surplus that we are comfortable with. This brings us close, that would bring us closer to 15, we could nod there as well. But I think what Angus is recommending, and we left the conversation, maybe we should consider taking some of that surplus and moving it towards some capital items that we could eliminate from asking citizens to pay.
Totally agree.
It's just a conversation we're having at the moment. The other is, uh, at this very low interest rate environment we are in, there is an appeal to borrowing some of these assets that will have a life into a long time and sitting on our reserve, but at the moment, they're conversational, we don't have to make any decisions, someone would like to say they have strong feelings.
Well, if we were to next year's taxes, of course.
We could put it towards next year's taxes, we've talked about that, and, and that is where this board should start. My slight concern is, you put it towards next year's taxes, the year after, you have to provide citizens, remember the money we put towards your taxes, well, now we want it back, something to talk about, it is an immediate.
I want to put it there, I want, I'll leave the surplus and leave it available. If we want it for next year's taxes, I don't want to discuss next year's taxes, no.
Right.
It's ridiculous.
I agree.
I do believe the surplus is getting a bit uncomfortable at times. I think I could have picked, raised that pick on it, but it's getting high, and we've asked people.
It's getting where it should be.
Yes.
And, and we don't want it to go higher than that.
Well, we don't want the states to understand they got away too much money.
No, but, the, the, the point, the point of borrowing is that when you borrow, the, the people that get the use out of the item pay for it over time.
That's right.
Now, and if you buy it, then you're really buying it with old, old money, if you will.
That's correct.
Uh, and yet, as an old-fashioned kind of a guy, I'm not a big fan of borrowing unless you have to borrow. Hey, and, and usually. you have to borrow, and, and usually when you have to borrow, that's a bad sign anyway. So, in this particular case, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting we vote on anything, or I'm not bringing, I'm just saying I'm comfortable with taking some money out of the capital account, that's what it's there for, to, to do things like the truck, you know, things like. So, as long as it's also going to be used for.
Our pension.
Yes. So I'm just trying to build that up a little bit.
We've been doing a decent job.
We've been doing that, and I think, yeah.
But that's, we're still not.
Yeah, we put it into the pension.
You put it in the pension?
You can't take it back out of here.
Not easily.
Not easily.
That's correct.
But yes. But we haven't tried to build that back up.
No, we've been getting that to where it's supposed to be.
Yes.
Again, just like the surplus.
Yeah. And all of these things have to be taken into consideration when you make any decision, a big, a big ticket item decision like this.
Correct.
It's, it's to be thought of, about, I should say.
Well, that's why we're talking about it now, so we can think about it a little bit before it's an emergency purchase. And, and you hit the nail on the head, I think, I think a lot of folks are of the mind, and I, I know in my personal life, borrowing is the last thing I want to do, but in municipal life, I think there's, it's a different, it's a different animal, and, and I think that you described exactly what municipal budgeting is about, when you said, when you borrow for something that's going, the truck the town's going to have for fifteen or thirty years, the folks that are enjoying that, use of that piece of equipment are the folks that are paying for it. And that's, that goes a long way for me. But, we also have capital improvement, you know, non-recurring funds for a reason. So, you know, we can start thinking about, I think, I think that we are in a position now where we've got our surplus where it needs to be, we can start talking about utilizing the capital for just that, so.
There was a time many, many years ago where the capital, you know, sort of added in.
Yeah.
And part of that percentage, that, and, and it was a big part, you know, and that is no longer the case, we actually have, we're, we're actually where we're, more where we should be.
Yeah, correct.
So, yes, we can use that money, that's what it's there for. If, 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 we'll argue that out.
Yeah, yeah.
Over the course of the winter and spring.
Yep.
All right, if Angus, I, I does not have anything additional to add, I will suggest we turn to the monthly budget report. Does anyone find anything of interest in the budget?
I looked at it today and I didn't see any.
No, I didn't either.
Flirt out at people.
Uh, nor did Angus and I look at it, don't, I, I do not think of anything there that, and I won't take you through any more. Taxes are coming in well, they're over fifty percent, which is positive. If you note, houses continue to be sold in Deep River, and we are getting the proceeds for those additions of the house, so those dollars seem to be coming in positively, and I don't see any extreme dollars going out. Anything that we want to bring to anyone's, I can't think of anything.
I don't think of anything that's, that's not there, other than, like you said, the, the revenue that was, is being generated by conveyance taxes and by building permits is almost at a hundred percent, and we're half, not even halfway through the year.
So, yes.
Your crystal ball failed again. Can, can I say one thing, this has nothing to do unfortunately, but we had our stuff at Cruiser, I don't know, nine days ago, whatever, Officer Wisner, Scott Wisner, was excellent, we did as, what we usually do, we filled up the food pantry. There was a constable here that helped me in the morning, put a sign together, I don't, I didn't catch his name, but I had not met him yet, they're just, they're a really good group.
Yeah.
And, and I wanted to shout out and, and say that, because the work that they do at Thanksgiving time is important for a lot of people, it went well.
Good, good, and, you know, just to, if we're shouting out, I'd like to thank you for your stewardship of the community health committee. We made reappointments, last one, and your time is up on that, and, and we appreciate the effort you've put into it, every year has been tremendous, and, and once again, look at the, look at the balance of that budget, it's a, a great indication of the leadership that that group has got, and it's very much appreciated.
The folks that are, that are going to be doing that work going forward have a lot of wherewithal to do it with, it's not, I'd, I'd love to say, oh, yeah, I'm so good at that. Who's good at that? The citizens of Deep River, the generous people who, for years, they, they continue to donate money, businesses, groups, you know, rotary churches, I couldn't begin to name them all, but it's the citizens of Deep River that deserve all the kudos.
Yes.
Angus, have an update on the fire truck, do you have any, do you know?
I have not heard of the status, I'm expecting to any time now, but I think we've, we're going to have to make a payment sometime soon.
Yes. Oh, the dumb capital, throws upon capital and cash, that's right, we need to make a payment, I can't remember exactly what they call, there, there was some estimate, but I assume there was the delivery item.
Yeah, I, I have not heard anything from the fire department about the, the truck that's ordered, I have heard about the truck that they need.
They are, of course, they are daily. They are not letting Angus and I get periodic updates, don't forget, don't forget the future, so.
And that, I will tell you, we are working hard to find grants from, from the federal government on that, and, and I think we have made some inroads with Congressman Courtney and with Senator Blumenthal, that both of whom are, are prepared to, to help with That's, my goal is to, is to put in a good grant application and have that next truck that they're looking for, for that.
If no one has seen anything, we could, we could talk about little pieces here, but everyone seems to be, this is about the, we would, at this point of the year, we would have probably spent about forty percent of our budget if it's straight line, most pay, most items seem to be in that sixty percent or seventy percent, even the highway department seems to have fairly substantial unspent dollars. So, with that in mind, anyone have any other items they would like? Just, what is our, this is where we missed Larry, Larry would have these things figured out, where is December and our?
December twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, is our, okay, and that is, I assume that everyone would be okay, and they need December twenty-first?
Nope, December twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, so it is, extra, yes, Larry, anyone have any initial hesitations that that is a day that should be canceled?
I should be sobered up, but.
That's.
Pretty young for New Year's.
Let us assume that we will meet on December twenty-eighth, if there's any change, we will talk.
Can I ask a question about next year's schedule, and Joyce, you may know this, have we put in the, the meeting schedule with the town clerk?
No, you guys would have to approve it, and Bud wanted me to do it for next month, for next month's meeting.
Good.
And then the motion range? Uh, you can, this is the responsibility of seconding, comes and falls on your shoulders.
I'm not going to do it.
And I thought we'll just sit here for a.
All right, all right.
All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Leave the table until you meet your board, we'll handle this.